I'd like to call this July 29, 2020 Regular Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagnostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Biswell?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
All present?
All present, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in our agenda, we always remind ourselves what our district goals are. Our district goals remain student academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement, and more than usual, all three of those will be on display during our meeting today, and we always work to balance the three, knowing that sometimes it's difficult. Next on our agenda is public comment. I have two perfectly random. Julie Lawson will go first. As a reminder, please state your name and your address for the record, and then your public comment.
Thank you. My name is Julie Lawson, 10728 Forestview Drive. On October 24, 2017, I woke up to the news that a Strongsville 6th grade teacher had been killed the night before. I sent my 6th grade daughter to school unprepared to face this kind of grief so close to home. I cried, regrouped, and took my therapy dog, Callie, to the middle school for the day. We stayed the entire day, starting in the auditorium full of crying, confused, and scared students, mixed with compassionate and skilled crisis counselors. I moved through the 6th grade hallway and saw smiles briefly light up on students' tear-filled faces as they pet my fluffy dog. I settled in on the floor to listen to a student sing a song in front of her pod in her teacher's honor. It was a hard day. Since then, I've been to another school district and also back to our middle school here with Callie, both times after the untimely death of a student. I watched dazed kids pet my dog. I hugged crying teachers. I've been to the Strongsville Town Square to remember a high school student gone too soon. Each time, I was taken to the students who were closest with the lost child. Each time, I felt their pain. Each time, my dog and I couldn't take that grief away. I'm an engineer, and I'm driven by data, but I will not stand here tonight and debate science, statistics, or color-coded maps. I will instead remind everyone in our school district and in our community that each statistic, each number, is a human. Someone's child, someone's teacher. Each number is someone. Clearly, there will be COVID cases in our school district and in districts around us. Will there be deaths? Will there be enough crisis counselors to go around? Will there be enough substitutes as our teachers get sick? None of us know. And while all I want is for my children to be able to return to school five days a week in person and enjoy their friends and their extracurricular activities, I also acknowledge that this year will absolutely not be normal. That is out of our control. I saw firsthand how devastating the shutdown last spring was academically, socially, emotionally, and mentally on my own kids, but it was nothing compared to the death of a peer or a teacher. Tonight, we need to focus on what we can control. I implore the school board to enact a policy requiring face masks for all students, staff, and teachers at all times. I ask for a thorough restart plan that will provide five days a week of live instruction from our great teachers, whether we are in person, hybrid, or remote. I ask for consistency, structure, and above all, guidelines that will protect our students, teachers, and families from the worst pain imaginable, the death of a teacher or child. Please err on the side of caution despite all the debates going around in our society right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I appreciate your comments. And next, during public comment, we have Sawyer Kosak-Wheat. It's your turn, Sawyer.
Is it working?
Yeah, they're good.
Yay. So I'm not going to actually go by the, all of the writing out here. I'm going to switch things up a bit. Actually, no, I'm going to go the way it was wrote. Um, my name is Sawyer Kosak-Wheat. Oh, wait, what am I, what am I, was I supposed to, was I supposed to say my address?
Take a deep breath, tell us your name and your address, and then you can read your prepared comments.
My name is Sawyer Kosak-Wheat, and my address is 12542 Cooper's Run. My name is Sawyer, oh, I already said that, and I, I go to Surawa. I'm going to be in 4th grade. I want to go back to school very badly because I miss my friends. I also love art class, and I think that will be hard to do online. But I also don't want to get sick or make my family sick because some of my family members are high-risk for serious problems if they got COVID-19. If they got sick, I would be very worried and upset. When we shut down this year, I did not like the way we did it. It did not feel like school because I couldn't work with my friends or ask my teachers questions. We need school to be as normal as it can be, but we can't be unsafe. If we are going, so if we are going to have online classes, I think we should have real teachers from Surawa instead of teachers somewhere who we don't even know. I need to have real, live video lessons with my Surawa teacher. We should be, we should be able to ask the teachers, the teachers' questions and be able to talk to our friends when it's okay to. Please do an actual live teaching. It's so much better than, than watching a video and be expected to do all that work with no questions, no one to help you, and then turn it in and be expected to get a really good grade. Thanks so much for listening to me.
Sawyer, I just want to let you know, I know your mom and your dad are very proud of you, but I also want to let you know that everybody here is very proud of you. You spoke incredibly well.
Thanks.
You were concise, and you told us everything I think we need to know, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yay, thank you.
So next on our agenda is Superintendent's Report. So I turn it over to Dr. Raiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko, and thank you to both members of our community and our school district that shared their comments. We greatly appreciate your thoughts. We have two things we want to talk about this evening. We want to talk about our restart plan. Obviously, we shared a lot of our restart plan at our community conversation last week and, and shared it via email, but we want to have some further discussions about where we at, where we're at, some decisions that still need to be made, and have a discussion with the board on that topic. And the second thing is, as was brought up earlier in public comment, is a facial coverings policy. As, as we know, by the guidelines put in place at the state level, all staff are already required to wear facial coverings at all times in schools, but the governor's guidelines directed that school districts finalize and enact policies for how facial coverings will be handled for the students. And so what I've done prior to this is I've shared two example, two sample policies with the board. One of those policies that you just got yesterday from our policy company, Neola, came through yesterday, so you have that version. And then Walter Haverfeld, which is a law firm that we work with, they've shared a policy, some administrative guidelines, and a checklist to help with some of the management of it. So all of the board members were provided that previously. You have copies of that in front of you at your seats. So, Mr. Miko, I'll turn it back over to you. If it's okay with you, let's start with the facial covering policy discussion, and then we can get into the restart based on those discussions.
I appreciate that, Cameron. So I think as a board and as individuals, we've gotten plenty of feedback on the facial coverings. We've discussed it. I imagine we've discussed it as much as parents in the public have discussed it. I just wanted to have a little bit of comment on why it's, it seems like it's taking so long, but as Cameron mentioned, our, our policy agency that helps us make sure that we're compliant, they're working furiously, but lawyers, the way lawyers work furiously and the way the rest of us work furiously sometimes is different, but we literally got this yesterday. It's important that we consider what the, what Neola brings to us because part of their service is that they, they make sure it's compliant, not just with local law, but with state law and federal law, and they, they do that as a service. If every, if every school district in Ohio had to hire a lawyer to do this, it would be an extra expense, so it's kind of like a shared service. So unfortunately, we've only had it since yesterday to read through this, and I'm not a big fan of reading through on one day and just adopting it, but it is important that we communicate to parents where we stand. So I'm going to start the discussion, and what we've talked about is, as far as the adults in the district are concerned, all the employees, all the visitors, anybody coming into our district is going to be required to wear a face shield or a facial covering. It's going to have to have some kind of mask in place. The question for where the school board is, is what do we want to do with students? And we've discussed that at length. We've just, you know, we've looked at all the different guidance, you know, is it required for old or young or what have you? So I'm just going to start the discussion with where I'm at with it, and then we can make sure there's consensus. But at the end of the day, I think we need to have a facial covering policy that is comprehensive, so that means it's anybody, including the therapy dogs, that come on the district property will need a facial covering. You know, I don't think we need, I don't think it's wise at this point in time with what we know about the pandemic to carve out exceptions. So that'd be from preschool, not just kindergarten, but from preschool all the way through senior and high school and anybody beyond senior, just, you know, basically north, south, east, west, up and down, we will have a facial covering expectation. We need a policy that is reasonable, effective, and practical. So whether it's a cloth face covering, whether it's the disposable paper ones, and I'm going to go through the exercise because a lot of people ask about it, whether it's a face shield, and I will feel foolish wearing it, but I'm going to go through the exercise. I'm not concerned, can, can everyone hear me? I'm not concerned what kind of facial covering you have. I'm concerned that you have one. At work, we, a lot of my coworkers are using face shields. We have a high, a high heat environment. We have to wear safety glasses. We have to wear earplugs. Wearing a face mask in all of that becomes very difficult. When you're wearing a, if you're wearing glasses and wearing a face mask, that becomes difficult. We have a lot of students who wear glasses. So as far as that face mask policy, I want to make sure it has the flexibility that if someone wants a face shield, they can have a face shield. Someone wants a cloth mask, they can have a cloth mask. What's unacceptable is not to have any kind of covering. So I'm now going to put the mask back on. The next step in our, in our discussion is, you know, certain students have, and adults, not just the students, have different health issues or special needs that would prevent or complicate wearing some kind of facial covering. And so as an example, if you have asthma, wearing a cloth covering could exacerbate that, and that's when we can go to the face shield or, or some other device to act as that barrier. I will use as an example, if a student has autism, perhaps putting on any kind of covering would cause a behavior. We will work through that. We have the teachers and the, and the therapists who help us with those situations. I want all parents to know that our policy will be flexible. We'll work through that, but I don't think we want a policy that's a game of gotcha. It's not like if you fill out a piece of paper, you get exempt from it. Our face mask policy will be best maximum effort. Everybody needs to do their best job, recognizing that it can be uncomfortable, recognizing we have small children, that, you know, depending on the time of the day or what have you, the same way I am, it gets tiring to wear this, but I know I need to wear it, but we need to have that kind of flexibility. Parents who have questions about young students, I've said before, we have experts in helping students learn the new rules. They happen to be the teachers and the staff we already have in the building, so I'm comfortable that we can have a policy that is comprehensive from kindergarten all the way up. I see Sawyer has his mask on. I'm sure the first time he put it on, it was a little bit uncomfortable, but over time, he's gotten comfortable with it, and if the price of admission for having our kids back in school is that we go through a little bit of uncomfort with a face mask, I think it's reasonable that we do that. I also think it's reasonable that we do that to protect ourselves from whatever this pandemic is going to do. So like I said, I think it'll be top to bottom and very comprehensive. There will be no age exceptions. There will be exceptions that we'll work through and we'll have administrative guidelines, and that's kind of the way we work through it. We set the policy. The policy sets at a very high level the expectation, and then we craft with the administration, administrative guidelines so that we know how to actually implement the policy. And the administrative guidelines would be the things that would cover if a parent has a concern about their child wearing a face mask, how do you, how do you deal with that concern? How do you talk through that concern and come up with a, an accommodation or, or a situation to address it? I don't want a policy that is nine pages long. We need a policy that explains our expectation and then allow those administrative guidelines to deliver the expectation, and it's also the way we can change things. As we go through this pandemic, I hope and I know we'll get to a day where maybe face coverings aren't as rigorously required. Until then, you know, I don't want to have to come back every time to change a policy, so that's why we have the policy, which will set the high-level goals, and then we have those administrative guidelines that'll let us deal with it on a individual and a case-by-case basis. Any comments or discussion from my fellow board members?
I just had one thing I wanted to add. In setting our standards high, I think it's important to be reminded that there are correct ways to wear the masks, and we're not looking just for, you know, students to have the mask on, but to have them on correctly. And the policy here, you know, as we will publish eventually, states things like, as Richard demonstrated, the face shield needs to cover the chin, so we don't want them up higher and the nose and the mouth and so on, the things that you're already familiar with. We want to make sure we, we keep those in mind as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? And for the good of the order, I want to be able to publicly state to any parents or anybody in the audience that we are in, that we will have a facial mask policy. It will be comprehensive. It will be reasonable, and it will be something that we all can work and do together. And because the paperwork came so late, we will finalize that paperwork, and we will vote to enact that policy at our very next board meeting, which is August?
6th.
6th. But anybody who's one, is, especially the parents and the, and the students who are concerned about that and are waiting to determine what the policy is to make decisions on what they want to do for education next year, we will have a facial mask policy or a facial covering policy. It will be comprehensive from kindergarten all the way up. Thank you. It'll be comprehensive from preschool, kindergarten, all the way up to seniors and anyone else in the school district, and again, it is not going, it is intended not to be a game of gotcha. It is intended that everybody works together to get through this pandemic as safely as possible. So hopefully, that's as clear as we can be without actually having the document, the legal document, but we will get that out there. Is everyone comfortable with that? Do we have consensus on that? You're next.
Thank you again. So looking at the restart plan, there's a couple items. Before we get into the details of the actual plan, there's a couple aspects of the decision-making that I need board feedback on and direction. So the first is tuition for our preschool and full-day kindergarten program. So as we talked about last year, we reimbursed a part of that tuition, and as we go into this school year with the assumption that we probably will not be in person every single day of the school year, we're recommending, George and I have spent time discussing this and would like to have a proactive response in terms of tuition. So what we're recommending for consideration is that we take the tuition that is there for preschool. We take the tuition that's existing for full-day kindergarten based on this year's numbers, and we break that down to a daily rate. Once you break that down to a daily rate, then we would assess tuition only on the days that preschool students or full-day kindergarten students were physically present for a day of instruction. So if you take a look at our three models of in-person and building, they would pay for those days that they were in person and building. If we enact the blended learning structure, they would only pay for those days that they were in person, not the remote learning days. If we enact the remote learning days, they would not pay at all during that time period because they're not getting in-person instruction. We understand that we're providing a service, that we're providing an educational service, and that service does not translate with parity in a, in a remote setting. And so what we were also recommending is that we would change our billing cycle to be three times a year so that we could bill based on actual days attended. So at the elementary preschool and kindergarten levels, students are on trimesters, so one of the options would be to bill families at the end of each trimester for the specific days that kids attended. And so, George, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add to the conversation in terms of our recommendation for tuition?
That's correct, and just to kind of clarify too, the, our current billing cycle is, in previous years prior to COVID, it's one payment, or it could be one payment at the beginning of the school year. If it's paid in full, you get a $50 discount, and the second payment done at the beginning of January. So the recommendation that me and Mr. Raiba discussed was to modify that and having those three payments at the end of each trimester based on the number of days. However, we could also look at other, if the board is interested, we could also look at other frequencies as well, whether it's monthly trimesters or different cadence, but...
I'd like to recommend that we look at a monthly option as well, where it could be something that families can sign up on automatic bill pay. I'm not sure what kind of, what kind of system we have in place currently for that, but something where we can take a look each month, and they would be charged a certain amount based on the, the days that are expected, and that rate would adjust based on kind of how many days that were, that were happened. So any amount that was not used in the previous month would carry over and so forth. I think that would help with a lot of families in this, kind of the time that we're in and having to go a little more month-to-month on times and give us a little more kind of options for them as well.
And then the, the comment I had that I just, again, I think we should comment that I think it's reasonable and it follows all, all the decisions we've made in the past. When, when we had the stay-at-home order, we looked at all of those fees, and we said if there was something that was delivered, we would continue that charge, and that would be the correct thing to do, but, you know, for example, if a science class was in that last semester and, you know, we're charging for chemistry supplies, but there was no chemistry class, we're not charging for the, the chemistry fees. And we looked at our tuition the same way, and we did a, a rough, a rough proportional charge based on what actually occurred. So I think it makes sense that we accommodate that same rationale for our kindergarten tuition. The only, the other suggestion I had would be similar to like when you rent an apartment, you place that security deposit. So start, whether it's, whether it's trimesters, I think trimesters is nice from an administrative standpoint. It breaks it down, but it also means you're only doing three. I do, I do think Seth has a point that we will have families that finances have become a very big issue in their daily lives, and so perhaps monthly will be something that would be helpful to our families in whatever situation they have. But I would suggest we do it at the beginning. So whether it's monthly or trimester, we charge that full portion for that first payment, and then every subsequent payment, we just reduce whatever that is, and then the last payment, you know, you, you would, you would either have a small amount or, or none at all, but that way we can balance, you know, ultimately, we don't want to be chasing. So if we do that security deposit idea upfront, and then each subsequent payment, we would just look at the previous period and reduce the next payment by that amount. I think that'll balance nicely everyone's needs, assuming you believe you can handle the administration.
Yeah, me and Mr. Roberts talked earlier today and also spoke with Secretary Don Evangelista, who kind of oversees it. So the one thing I forgot to mention too, as part of our regular routine, there is a $300 deposit that families pay when they sign up for kindergarten. So all the full-day kindergarteners have already paid that $300 deposit. So in discussion with Mr. Roberts earlier today, we kind of looked at three options, and the first one being kind of keeping our first two options is, families can pay it in full at the beginning of the school year, they receive the discount, and then at the end of the school year, it will come up, if there are any remote days, we'll factor in any refunds, initiate any credits and refunds back to the families. Have the, then have the second option, again, pay half of it the beginning of the school year, half of it in January, and then reduce that January amount based on any remote days from August or September, August to, to January, and then issuing refunds come May. Or the third option is request families, so we would have to, to go monthly, but have an automatic payment. Now, the automatic payment, we would have to manually input that each month, but we can request, we would need an authorization form from families signing off that they approve us to charge their credit card on a monthly basis. So those are kind of the three options that we discussed earlier today, and after talking with Mrs. Evangelista, we think we can support it.
I'm confident Dawn can handle the details. Any other questions or comments?
I have just two questions of clarification. We're talking about both pre-K and kindergarten?
Correct.
And where are we, just general, generally speaking, with, is pre-K planning to do virtual learning if they're not in the preschool?
So the preschool program, our solo program is not offered for preschool students, so the choice that they have is the, the in-person rotation. So they will, based on the designation of the school district, they will either be in-person, blended, or remote.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to go over some of the details, the pre-K program, the reason we have the pre-K program is we're obligated to have that program for special needs preschool students. Part of the, part of having that successful program is having what we call typical peers in the program, but we don't have a solo option, and it's, it's the typical peers that can choose to be in our program and pay for that program. Did that help flesh out all the details?
Yes, I was just trying to compare, you know, how does kindergarten in giving a refund compare to how pre-K?
It would actually be the same metric.
It sounds like it's the same.
It's exactly the same.
That's what I was going for. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I think you have your direction that you need. Dawn has the direction she needs. Next?
So that, just one last point, that, at the next, at the August 6th board meeting... So that, just one last point, that at the next, at the August 6th board meeting, we'll have the tuition, if it's available, we'll have the tuition rate for board approval.
Great.
Next, I wanted to talk to the board about additional staffing we're recommending. As as we know, we've implemented a temporary hiring freeze for our district. But as we get closer to the school year and take a look at the the needs that we have to implement procedures, to ensure that we have as many mitigation, implementing as many mitigation factors as possible, we need additional custodial staffing. Steve Brechner, our operations manager is here. If you have any specific questions, I'm sure he'd be able to speak to them more eloquently than I can. But the, we're recommending 33 additional hours of custodial staff. Those additional hours would go to help support the preschool and all five elementary schools. We feel we do not need any additional staff at the middle school and high school. We're, we're looking to rearrange some of our staff members in terms of the shifts that they work. So we can have additional support in first shift. But with the need to, once school leaves, to clean and sanitize and disinfect each room, high touch surfaces. We are not able to do that with our current staffing. So before we move forward with that, because of the temporary hiring freeze, I'd need the board to discuss and give some guidance on whether or not we have permission to move forward with the additional custodial staffing needs.
Thirty-three hours of what, what period of time? Thirty-three hours a week, thirty-three hours a month, thirty-three hours a year?
Thirty-three hours a day.
A day.
So how that breaks down is it would be an additional two hours of custodial time at Chapman. Six additional hours at Kinsner. Eight additional hours at Maraski. Six additional hours at Surar. Five additional hours at Whitney. And three additional hours at the preschool. And what this does is if you just take a look at it big picture, it gets all of our custodial staff in the, in the, at the elementary buildings at eight hour shifts. So we have hours sometimes that, you know, there are four hours at one building, three hours at another building. So we've been able to, and just to give you an idea, you know, this would give a head custodian and two full-time evening custodians at Chapman. Head custodian at Kinsner and three full-time evening custodians. At Kinsner and Maraski both would have the same because they're larger buildings. And Surar and Whitney would match what I said with Chapman, one head custodian during the day and two full-time evening custodians. And the preschool would have one head custodian during the day and one full-time custodian in the evening.
And that compares to what we're currently doing?
That's compared to current staffing, yes.
What is the current staffing?
So the current staffing, like at Whitney Elementary School, would be a full-time evening and a part-time person. So we're adding, we would eliminate a three-hour position and add an eight-hour position. So that's why when I said Whitney's plus five, oops, excuse me, that's where that's coming from.
I mean, my mic's not working. So if somebody wants to repeat me, so we're not adding additional bodies, we're adding hours onto a current part-time position? Is that correct? Or are we going to actually hire new bodies?
With with the amount of hours. So if you look at some of these folks and, you know, Steve can correct me. When we look at Whitney, that person may be split between two buildings. Correct. So you, they may have three hours at Whitney and some hours somewhere else. So that person, nobody's going to lose their job. We may consolidate, we may have to post and bid because we're increasing hours to that. But we're saying instead of having a person travel, those pieces parts can come together in that one person. But we're going to have some leftovers that we don't have people to fill. So we'll have to post those and hire employees.
How many additional would that be then?
I think we should get Steve up on the microphone.
Come on up, Steve. So how many additional custodians would we need to hire with those hours, Steve?
Uh, we'd be looking at three, three to four.
And would they get standard contracts? So like I'm wondering what happens if we end up all remote for half of the year and we just hired three custodians, right? So is there a way to hire them on a temporary basis?
Jenny can come to the podium.
Well, we have mechanisms within the contract. So if we were gonna, I think the hard part is if we go remote for a couple of weeks versus if we know we're remote from now until the end of the year. So there are mechanisms in the contract that we would go through and unfortunately put in place to possibly riff. If that's the case, if we know it's an extended period of time. You know, so we could, we could certainly do that.
Steve, the reason I called you up is it's important that we, I'm supportive of the of the additional staff. We're going to need that additional staff if if we're going to be safe and effective in-person learning. Can you just give us an overview of what you have planned for our schools to take that cleaning a step up? And what, you know, why, you know, it's easy to say, well, we need more bodies. But what does that actually mean on a day-to-day basis of the things that we have planned for the schools?
So, and I don't know if you had a slide you had prepared on this or? Okay. So during the day, the plan is to also have, in addition to the cleaning that's existed, to disinfect those high-touch areas, the door handles, the railings, bathrooms, twice, two additional times during the day. The cleaning at night is going to be the one that is really stepped up. Where, you know, the usual cleaning that was happening was disinfecting. But, you know, maybe it might was, it was every other night for some of the desks. And teachers were allowed to have papers out. Their desks maybe weren't cleaned off because students had projects on certain surfaces. And it was just a, it was just a nightmare to try and disinfect every night. That's now all going to be changed where everything is cleared off the desk, every touch, every surface that is going to be touched. And and the general rule of thumb is six feet and under will be disinfected. So with that plan is also the idea that we're going to have less touch points in these classrooms as well. So that's every evening. Now, if we, if we would do the the hybrid approach, Friday would be the quote-unquote deep cleaning. And that's where the walls will be scrubbed down six feet and under, the floors would be mopped. And all of the desks and everything else would be, we would use a product that is, and and I'll be diplomatic. It is safe to use when people are around. But the smell is strong and for people that maybe have some breathing issues, it's not recommended within an hour of it being applied for people to be sitting there at the desk and breathing it in. So that's what we would be using on those deep cleaning days because the students wouldn't be there, teachers wouldn't be there. But the increased staff is because the the level and the expectation of disinfecting and sanitizing is up. We've also invested as a district in electrostatic sprayers that are going to be in every building. Those electrostatic sprayers will help us sanitize very quickly locker rooms, bathrooms, classrooms and all of that. So the the plan is, is I think comprehensive, it's run through the committee. It just does require more person power to get it done.
And just to add to that, you know, we've been sharing our restart website. And on there, as you can see here, is our cleaning and disinfection plan. So you can click on that and you can see the detailed plan that's been developed by Steve and his committee. And if you want to get more information on the chemicals that are used, not only do we list them here, but we have an informational flyer that's linked for people to see exactly what chemicals are going to be used. And then you can go back to the plan and to see where they're going to be used for which surfaces.
Any questions for Steve? So I just want to thank you because I know it's been a lot of work and I know everybody's been putting in a lot of time. But I wanted to make sure that parents get that message that, you know, when we say we're going to step up our cleaning protocols, we've thought through that and we've, we're doing a serious effort to do that. I I've noticed in the news that some of the chemicals have been brought into question, et cetera. So I appreciate that you've gone that extra distance to make sure that our chemicals are, do what they say they do. But they only do what they say they do, that we're not getting, you know, disinfectants or whatever that turn out to be toxic or harmful. They are safe to use when we follow the guidelines. And I appreciate, you know, acknowledging things like we need to do this at night so that there's a period of time for it to air out, so to speak. So I really appreciate all the work you're doing and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So next I want to continue to talk about globally our our restart plan. And as as we just said, Steve's here, the rest of our directors are here. Unfortunately, Mr. Treheo couldn't be here, so he is, he will.
He looks a lot like Dr. Raiba.
He does look a lot like you, right? So let's get that unfortunate thing off the screen. Let me log in so Andy can join us here in a second. And so Andy will be in in the background here when he's able to join us. So what I, so he'll be with us shortly as we we can answer questions. So what I want to be able to do is as, as we talk about things like the solo program, Aaron's the expert in that area. And she can come add and Jenny in HR and Dave in tech and Dan in communications and Andy in in student services. So as we go through that, those folks are available. But what I thought we could start our discussion on is kind of the overall plan. So this is, this is a graphic that we've shared. You know, the the kind of big picture global first decision is how are we going to go through these structures? We know we've talked a lot about that we need to be prepared for in-person, in-building, remote and blended. And so this is what I shared at the community conversations that that we would, let me turn this down so there's not so much stack. That we would, we would follow the county color coding system that's been established at the state level. And I think for this discussion, let's start where I think there's simplicity. And where I think, based on the feedback we've received, that we all agree. Or most of us agree, that probably would be a better way to state that. So where we have not seen any feedback either way is it seems like we're moving forward. And we all understand that if it's a level one, yellow, level two, orange, that that would be in-person, in-building learning. And all kids would come every day to school with a lot of safety procedures and protocols in place. And so that's that piece of it. When we talk about level four, let's not talk about anything other than what level four means. If the county is in purple, level four, the district would close down for students and we would be complete remote learning. So I haven't had any feedback either way in terms of purple. People seem to understand and be supportive of the fact that purple would be remote learning 2.0, five days a week. The the part where it it becomes a little more discussion, discussion in favor of it or discussion with concerns with the lack of definitive answer is level three, which is red. And and what we stated in the original plan that we shared is that that would be where we'd enact our blended learning plan. But the asterisk, if you read in the small print, talks about based on local factors and based on data that's available, we may consider keeping the district open, buildings open, other groups, student groups coming to school in person, in-building every day. So, you know, I understand from a parental perspective, yellow and orange and purple I got, right? I know, I know what that's going to be for my students. I know what I have to do in terms of childcare and that. But it becomes a little more challenging with that blended learning plan. So as difficult as this is, I think we as as educators and we as parents need to plan for all three options. We need to plan that at times throughout the year, our kids are going to be in school every day. At times throughout the year, they're going to be at home every day. And at times throughout the year, they may be in school for a couple of days and at home for the opposite days. But I think we have to take, we have to take the feedback we've gotten and take a look at that red and say, can we give greater clarity? And what does it mean and how quickly will we enact it? Because I I want to share with the board and our community that, you know, the equation of a learning model to a level is a district decision. We're, we're linking on to a state model. So the idea that the county goes to red, there's no guidance that says as soon as the county goes to red, we need to enact our plan. We've created that plan. So what's a reasonable amount of time to switch between these based on the trend data? So what I'd like to start the discussion with the board is, in in terms of that red, is feedback that you may have, ideas that you may have, discussion about how can we give flexibility to the school district to make decisions that are in the best interest of the health and safety of our kids and our our staff and our community? And and allow us the opportunity to not just look at a county measurement, especially for a county such as Cuyahoga County, but look at a variety of factors that may lead us to a a decision that's in the best interest and the health and safety and education of all of our stakeholders. So that's where I would, we have a lot to talk about in our restart plan. But I think let's start with the big picture, how we're going to structure and operate. And I think if you agree, red is where we need to spend a little time discussing.
So as we, as we discussed before, the the extreme, extreme is probably the bad word, but the the ends of the spectrum are fairly easy for everyone to agree on.
We believe that level one and level two, that we can safely and effectively have our students back in school full-time, five days a week. And that's based on the idea that we can do that safely. We, I've talked before, we've talked before about that balancing act, balancing what we truly believe that our, our education is essential. And it's best delivered when students are in school for for the vast majority. Like anything, there's exceptions. But we're comfortable that with the work that Steve Brechner is doing, with the work that we're doing as far as implementing a facial mask policy, along with all of those barriers of protection. I spoke before about that maximum best effort. It's not about doing one thing, it's about doing lots of things together so that we can reduce the risk of the pandemic infecting any of the adults or any of the students. So level one and level two seem to be that it would be reasonable for us to be in person five days a week. On the other end, purple, you know, the way the state has defined purple, they would look at a stay-at-home order regardless. So I don't, I don't think there's a lot of value in us discussing or trying to get into the weeds of purple. It's general, it's, it's generally agreed that if we're purple, for those who are in this flexible program, it would be remote learning 2.0, which would, I'm defining remote learning. There's lots of different ways to define remote learning 2.0. The way I look at it is it's what we did when we were during the stay-at-home order, but a whole lot better. The details, we'll, we'll get there. But the crux is level three and the challenge that I think all of us are dealing with is the idea of deviating from in-person learning five days a week for level three. If we feel that we could do it safely, forces us to reconsider. And it says, you know, what what we're saying is, is if Cuyahoga County is level three, is Strongsville level three? Nobody wants to, nobody on the board, nobody on the administrative team wants to say, let's bring our kids back in spite of evidence that it's not safe to do it. What we do want to say is we recognize that if we can do it safely, in-person learning lets us do it the best we can. The best we can for the teachers, the best we can for the students, for a variety of reasons. So we want to be able to use some judgment on if Cuyahoga County is level three, what does that mean for Strongsville? And I think that encapsulates why we're always hedging and wanting to to say we're not sure. But at the same time, parents and and the community deserves to understand something better than, Cameron, what are we doing? And it's not fair to Cameron to, you know, to always be directing it. So that's where we need to have that discussion of coming up with a way to say when Strong, when is Strongsville in level three, regardless or in conjunction with whether Cuyahoga County, Medina County, or Lorraine County is in level three. Do you want to bring up the next slides?
Sure. So one of the options to take a look at that is to evolve Level 3 and to say that Level 3, based, oh, I froze it, thank you. I wanted to make sure Andy was here. Andy is there, so, say hello, Andy. Oh, he's watching, he's delayed there, so, I know. Hello, Andy. Can I hear, hold on, I gotta turn up the volume, let's make sure we got this. All right, say something to make sure we can hear you.
Is there a question?
There is not a question, we just wanted to make sure the sound works. So, nothing for you yet, just hang on, we just wanted to say hi, make sure the technology worked.
Great.
All right, so going back to the next kind of graphic here, is taking a look at that Level 3 and saying, you know, how, what does the Level 3 mean for Strongsville? Versus what does it mean for the county? Because as Richard said, we are in the midst of Lorraine and Medina, right next to them. So what we're looking at is to say that Level 3 could be in-person, in-building, it could be blended learning, it could be remote learning. And let me kind of just read the notes specifically. It says, "At Level 3, the district may implement in-person, in-building learning, blended learning, or remote learning 2.0 for the district, specific buildings or student groups, based on the totality of data analyzed regarding COVID prevalence and spread in the county, surrounding communities, the city of Strongsville, and specifically within our school district." If we, if the board is interested in the approach, then the next step would be to develop metrics for determining which instructional delivery option would be implemented, and that would be developed and communicated to all stakeholders. So I guess what I would suggest to the board is, conceptually, we need to talk about, do we agree with this level of flexibility of, as Richard said, what does Level 3 mean for Strongsville? And that Level 3 could mean any aspect of our plan. And if we agree with that conceptually, then the next step would be to develop metrics to say, well, what are we going to look at? When you make these statements of local data, what does that actually mean? And how are you going to contextualize that to say, hey, you know, based on surrounding communities, based on Strongsville data, based on cases and exposure cases, and the rate of spread within our, our school district, what levers would be there to say, we need to go from in-person to full-remote, back to blended, whatever it may be? So I'm going to pause here and just open it up for feedback and discussion from the board in terms of, conceptually, defining what Level 3 means for Strongsville, and then developing metrics based off of that belief or concept.
Well, like, you hear me okay? When you talk about those metrics that you just mentioned, like rate of spread, for instance, one question I have is like, where are we getting this information from? Where would we be able to, like, I don't know, positive, positive cases that are positive? And you mentioned rate spread, we had talked about. I know there's a zip code, the county has the zip code thing, but that's not, that doesn't give you a lot of the detail that we're looking at. So where would we find this information?
So where we can find the information within our region is we could find it based on the Board of Health evident, or data that they're sharing. So if you look at the, like, if you look at Medina and Cuyahoga County Board of Health website, it does give by zip code, it does give a key of ranges, they've color-coded those. They haven't given descriptors, but they've color-coded those based on prevalence. And you can also look, they do it every Friday, and those keys change based on, based on the rates. And so like, if you look at Strongsville, Strongsville's in the lowest ranking of that system. And as you look at the range, the range has changed, but the range for that lowest system has stayed, it hasn't significantly grown. Medina County does something similar, but their ranges are different, right? So you've got to take into consideration that the range is unique to the county. So the, the low end for, for Strongsville may be, you know, 21 to 125. The low end for Medina County may be 2 to 15. And so you've got to take that into consideration. Lorraine County, right now, I was not able to find anything by zip code. It simply was for the county, county statistics. And, you know, Columbia Station is the only, you know, Columbia Station is our neighbor in Lorraine County. The other thing that you could look at is you could look at, we are required to track COVID cases in our district. So we would be able to look at data, an actual positive, COVID-positive cases at a district level and at a building level. Based on that data, you'd be able to look at the increasing rate or the spread on a weekly basis, or whatever, whatever time period you've shared. One of the other options that you could take a look at, you know, if you take a look at the seven criteria that the state has determined for how they're going to designate whether you're each in the levels, some of those apply to us, like, you know, the rate, the spread. But, you know, some of those other ones that they're getting from the hospital services wouldn't apply. But I believe we could reach out to a hospital like Southwest and share that's serving, it's an assumption, right, but that is serving our community to say, is your data matching what we're seeing in the county map? Is it matching what we're seeing in our schools in terms of case numbers, in terms of spread? So I think it's important, if the board gives direction, to look at, you know, a metric for our district, that we don't rely on one data source. That we're able to look at a variety of data sources that we can locally control, and we know based on the information we have is accurate, that's being put on, out by the Board of Health, that may be in collaboration with hospitals that our community members would go to, that we could get reports on, you know, COVID prevalence and there. Those are some of the suggestions that I would consider that we take a look at. And I also think the piece of it, and this was kind of stated in our original plan, is we also have to, have to marry that with what mitigation factors do we have in place? Because I think that's an important consideration. So, you know, you've answered one of those. Facial coverings for all kids, all staff, all of the time, you know, and we know people are on different ends of the discussion on a lot of these topics. But there's pretty clear evidence that if everybody's wearing a facial covering, that's going to be, that's going to be a benefit. We talk about the cleaning and disinfection, we talk about access to hand washing stations. We talk about, you know, hygiene protocols until how we cough, how we sneeze, you know, the self, health self-assessment before students come to school. But I think when you take a look at metrics that I would consider, that you would take a look at enrollment. You take a look at how many students are we bringing into these buildings at one time? And that would be a factor, that would be important to take into consideration. I think we have to take into consideration the movement of students, the cohort, how are the cohorts moving? You know, if you take a look at our preschool and elementary, it's one cohort that's going to be together all day. Versus the middle school and high school, you have cohorts that are going to intermingle because they'll be switching classes. So I think that's something to be taken into consideration. And I think the social distancing also needs to be taken into consideration, is how far are we able to socially distance? As we've continued to communicate, right now, for all the data that's been shared with me at the building level, we are still able to maintain a five-foot minimum social distancing, striving for that six-foot. Once we get the solo enrollment done, we may be able to hit that six-foot in some classrooms. You know, we've gone at the secondary level, we've capped classes based on the social distancing we can get at five feet. So those are all things that I think we need to take into consideration. And I know it's human nature to compare school districts to school districts. What plans, you know, we're all variations of a theme here on these plans. But I think if you take a look at some of the plans, you know, some folks ask me, well, why don't, why didn't we start later? Why, you know, some other districts are starting later. Well, if you, not that it's cohesive across everybody, but if you take a look about why some school districts are starting later, it's because they had construction projects, and they were already planning to start later. Or they don't have air conditioning. And the idea of, in a pandemic with COVID, wearing masks, and they can't have air conditioning, starting earlier in August, doesn't make sense. Or, you know, they are only able to socially distance at a maximum of three feet. You know, and so that, that's the difference between five feet, six feet versus three feet. So there are other factors. But those are, Sheri, those are some of the things that I think it would, it's imperative of us, if we, if we go down this pathway, that we look at, how can we get the most reliable data? How can we look at it from a variety of sources? And how can we put this together to make a decision, as Rich said, that takes the health and safety of our student staff as the foremost priority, and makes a decision from that point moving forward?
So are we looking at developing metrics for each? I know you mentioned depends on each school, whether they, was the social distancing, or the different mingling of the cohorts? So should we be looking at metrics for the high school levels different from the middle school and elementary school?
I think, you know, just in, in my thought process, the metrics should be the same, but they should be applied to each of the buildings. So if you take a look and say, student enrollment, we can create metrics that say, you know, student enrollment, we're going to break it down into these various student groupings, and put a weight to those groupings. And then we can apply that same metric to all of the buildings. So it starts with the same metric of saying, you know, if we have an enrollment in this range, we're going to weight it this much. If we have an enrollment in this range, we're going to weight it a little higher. And in this range, we're going to weight it even higher. And then we can look at our buildings and apply the same metric. So I do believe that, you know, the high school is a different, a different organizational, has its different organizational challenges than Chapman Elementary School has. And we have to acknowledge that, but I think we have to acknowledge it in a way that's based on the same foundational data.
Dr. Raiba, can you, can I, you talked about the different data you're able to get from kind of the surrounding communities. Can you share what communities we would be potentially looking at to get kind of that formula?
Yeah, so one of the things that we would look at is, or I would suggest we would look at is our bordering communities, right? Because that kind of talks about the spread. And if you look at the Cuyahoga County map, you can see that the, the four criteria of how they're ranking those, there are certain demographic areas in the county that are in that highest range, and the majority of those are not near Strongsville. And so what I would suggest is that we would look at our surrounding county, our surrounding communities, so that would be Berea, that would be Middleburg Heights, that would be North Royalton, Brunswick, and Columbia Station. The data that we're able to, to get from those in Cuyahoga and Medina County are ranges based on the zip code. Lorraine County, it's, it's global data based on the level that they're in, and they're sharing, you know, more positive cases, death rates for their population specifically. So that's the, that's as far as we're able to drill down right now. I know a common question that you hear is, well, that, you know, folks that live in Strongsville don't just stay in Strongsville or their surrounding communities, right? They go to work in other communities, and they may go work in communities that are at the highest level of prevalence, COVID prevalence, and may bring it back. But, and again, I'm not stating that I'm an expert in analysis of this data, but what I'm stating is that if you look at, they have data from every Friday, from the point this started. So if you look at every Friday, you can see weeks and weeks of data that state that although, you know, in that first part, we were shut down, right? But, but now, when, when the workforce is back, we could assume people are, may still be remote, working remotely, may still be working there. We haven't seen a significant uptick in cases in Strongsville, even though people are doing things outside of their home, right? They're, they're, they're going on vacations, they're, they're traveling, they're, we have sports that are going on. So there's more human interaction than, than there has been in those earlier months. But based on the data that's being shared, we're not seeing large swings. But the, the ability to get into the details and say, okay, Cuyahoga County Board of Health, the range for Strongsville is 19 to 125, tell us specifically what it is for Strongsville. Haven't been able to get that information, and based on recent communication, I do not see that they are going to give that information. So it's going to be these ranges, so we have to go into it knowing it's going to be these ranges.
I have a couple of questions. As you stated earlier, one of the suggested metrics was cases, you know, and that we have to track them as a school district. We already have school, our sports teams practicing, are we already tracking cases?
Yes, so we're already, we're already starting and tracking cases for sports or for any staff that may have contracted.
Are you able to speak to what those statistics are?
Jenny can.
So I have a sheet that I'm keeping. Sorry, I have a sheet that I'm keeping track of when we get notice that there has been either a positive case or possible contact with somebody that is positive. And I would say, right now, there's a hand, more, more than a handful of cases that possibly were exposed to somebody that was positive. So for example, a sibling in the home, you know, was in contact with somebody that was positive, or tested positive themselves. And so then, that student has been placed on a quarantine as well. But I, I feel as far as students go, we've had very few positive, our students test positive.
Jenny, specifically, I think we have one that has tested positive.
Yes.
And the majority have been exposures, but we have not received any word. They've been all cleared to come back after their quarantine. So we haven't seen a spread, as far as I know.
No, and we're working closely with the Board of Health, so we contact the Board of Health, we get guidance from them, how long should the quarantine take place? And they give us the guidance, and then that's our recommendation in communicating with those families.
Thank you. The other question I have is, we're talking a lot in abstracts right now about metrics and so forth. Do you have a suggested system that we can like, consider rather than just talking abstractly?
Yes, so I have, you know, some of the things that I've been talking about, I do have some suggestions as to, to what that could look like. And I can share those now if you'd like to.
If, if that's something we can do.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I think we're at that point. I did want to share, as far, as far as cases, when we have a case suspected or not, we have to report it to the County Board of Health. And at that point, we have a dialogue with them on what next steps are. So one of the things that I was thinking is, is if we take, you know, the, when the governor and the Ohio Department of Health has talked about these levels and this public health indicator, he's talked about how it's a weather forecasting tool. It lets us know, you know, where we're at and how we should react. And so if we take those as a guideline and try to localize them, I think number of infections, or number of possible infections for our schools is a useful metric. And it's one that we can, like Sheri was wondering, how do we actually get this data versus guessing? It's a number that we can get with specificity ourselves, we're not relying on anyone else. And we'll be able, we'll have to track that data anyways, because we're going to have to have that dialogue with the Board of Health to determine what happens for that individual student, along with the wider community. So again, extremes are easy to discuss. If there's only one infection in the entire school, district, what would our response be? I don't think we would go to Level 4 for that. On the other hand, I was talking historically, you know, as an example, schools, if flu gets rampant in an individual school, there are examples of closing that school down to give a deep clean and let the, the flu work its way through. And I think, Cameron, you said 20% is the number that the, the Board of Health uses. So we could set that metric, and it would be unique to each school, recognizing some schools are bigger than others. It wouldn't just be, hey, if there's 100 kids at any school, you know, 100 kids at a school with 250 is not the same as 100 kids at the high school. But we could set that, and I think maybe we'd be more conservative, 10%. One of the other ones we talked about is the rate that it's growing, and how fast, et cetera. And again, it's just a, trying to get up, get a trend or an idea of, do we need to do something as, as strenuous as Level 4? Everyone stays home, stay-at-home type? Everyone stays home, stay at home type order? Or can we do something in the middle to try to get down from level three and back to a reasonable level? But we do have the ability and, you know, like I said, we already have to have the conversations with the Board of Health on what to do. And the questions they are asking is, you know, were masks in play? Was distancing in play? Was Steve's extended cleaning plan in play? And it's not that they're gonna, you know, it's not that they're going tut tut. It's to say, if you have none of those, we have to have a wider quarantine. If you have a lot of those in place, you can be much more controlled. You know, I use our, my work as an example. If someone is sick, they're, they're told to go to their doctor. And their doctor will evaluate them and determine the severity. And based on the doctor's response, they can either come back to work or they have to maintain a larger quarantine. So we'll, we'll balance these issues, but why don't we tee up some of your ideas?
So as I share, this is just a starting point, right? These are just ideas thrown down just to, to look at something. So as we look at a possible level three red decision metric, matrix, I kind of base this example, kind of what the state has done. What is the indicator, what's being measured, or I think they say, what does this mean? And then some criteria, again, just a starting point. So as we take a look at, we'll look at this in two, two lenses. First of all, a district lens and then a specific building lens. So just as, as a first draft at it, what are some indicators we can look at for the district? The first one is the Cuyahoga County risk level. It, what, what it's measuring is the level of exposure and spread of COVID in the county. And I just, as for talking points, started with a zero, one, two scale. So I put yellow and orange as zero, red as one and purple as two. And we'll see how this kind of all marries together in a little bit. COVID prevalence in Strongsville, that just looks at, is self-explanatory, the prevalence of COVID in Strongsville. Taking on the way that they measure this on the county map by the zip codes. Again, there's four categories. I put low as zero, medium as one, and then the highest two categories together would get two, two points. As you take a look at COVID prevalence in, in bordering communities, so this would be the same idea. We would total this up for all the neighboring communities. And as I, I put an asterisk here, Columbia Station is a neighboring community, but because we don't have the availability of seeing their specific data, they're not included. And we would use the same metric as we did for Strongsville. This would have to, criteria would have to be defined for what does low mean? What does medium mean? What does high mean? I think we'd have to start with getting some baseline data to define that. I don't feel comfortable even giving a guess at that right now. But new cases in the district would look at the number of positive cases and the number of students and staff quarantined due to exposure to positive cases for individual or, or to COVID, get rid of individual, for the district per week. So this goes to Rich's comment of, if we have 20% or 10% of folks that can't be there, then that's a metric baseline that we, we could set or take a look at. And then the second one is, this is about prevalence, the next one is about spread. What is the rate of increase from, from whatever, week to week, a five day look back, whatever you want to take a look at? What's the increase from the previous metric of positive cases and exposures to positive cases for the district as compared to the previous week? Again, we would need to set what that criteria means and what would be in those areas of low, medium or high. I'll keep going unless there's questions or clarifications on those. Below the, the, the line is, would be our building metrics. So we would look at, again, similar new cases per building. So this was just take the district data and break it down for each of the eight buildings. The same idea would be for the rate of spread, that we would look at a metric for that. And again, the same idea that we would need to set the, set the parameters based on baseline data. And as I kind of alluded to with Sherry's question, we would take a look at student enrollment. Again, I broke those down to encompass, we have small elementary schools, we have larger elementary schools, and then we've got large middle schools and high schools. And, and so that was a deliberate breakdown in the numbers by me to fit the buildings based on what I saw as student enrollment that would put it at, at each of those levels. Cohort movement, again, it would be measuring the amount of movement and exposure to students to varied student cohort, cohorts throughout the day. You know, low would be my elementary example of limited to no movement. And then when we get to the secondary level, there's more movement and, and you know, we'd have to establish clarity on what those criteria mean. The social distancing, again, six feet or more would be the desired, the desired five feet and then less than five feet, which we don't have any rooms at that point right now, but just as a marker. And then I think when you look in the building designation, I'm suggesting that you also have to look at factoring in the district designation. You can't ignore that data for the building. So if the district, if the district data came out as in-person in-building, blended or remote learning, there would be a factor there as well. So I'm going to go on and I, I built a scenario, just if you want me to go on to that, Mr. McGo or pause here.
I just want to, I just want to comment that one of the things, you know, just looking at some of them, like cohort movement, that's a fancy 75 cent word, but what that means is.
Thank you.
If you want it to be a dollar, we can make it and let inflation run. But what that means is, is we recognize that the concerns and the, and the possibilities for infection, the COVID-19 spreading are different at the high school than they are at our, at our preschool, right? The amount of movement at the preschool is, you know, there isn't changing classes in kindergarten, in the elementaries, et cetera. So the, the risk level is different. And I like that you have those categories to kind of weigh the different, the different levels of risk. Because if it's, if it hasn't been obvious, we're looking at a plan that isn't just district-wide, but allows us to be safe per school. And perhaps, you know, I would never want to have to close a school and everybody else is, is closed also, but really what we needed to do is close that school. And vice versa. If we need to close the district for the safety of everybody, that's what we need to do. But I do like the weighting because it, it, it follows all the guidance that we're getting from our health department, from the CDC, from, from Columbus, but it allows us to apply it to what is best for Strongsville. You know, to use again, a, a wide example, when the pandemic first started, the things that New York City was doing was appropriate for New York City. It wasn't, the same tools didn't need to be applied everywhere. So why don't you go on with that scenario?
So just to, to give context, and again, my, my disclaimer is, these are just numbers that were put together to share an example. So if we would break this down and look at it separately versus what would, and I'm taking a look at right now. You know, if we, if we had this, based on the data that's available right now, July 29th, you know, and I just repeated this, so we are in red, that would be a one. Prevalence in Strongsville, we're the lowest category as I talked about, that would be a zero. You know, these are the four cities in alphabetical order about where they would rank in low, medium or to medium, high. So that would be three total points there. We do not have data for cases in the district and prevalence in the district at this time. So out of 16, if my math is correct, two, four, you know, 12, right? Well, I'll fix it. Is it 16?
You were a music major, weren't you?
I was, but I'm 12. Yeah, it, it should be 12. So, so four out of 12. And so if we, I'd have to, let's just go with my example here. So we, I don't have to correct all the math there. So in the example, we, we, we had four points, right? But it would still work out mathematically. So what I did just for a scenario is take this chart and say, well, if you get this number of four, what does it mean in terms of level three? Would we be in-person? Would we be blended or would we be remote? So just to be, have mathematical parity, I just said, we'll take 50% of whatever the top number is and that will be the in-person in-building. Because if you look at the criterias, that appeared to be safe. So that would be six points. So we got four out of 12. This would have been, after my correction, zero to six. So that would say, as a district, we are set up to have in-person, in-building learning. And then I, I would move this, you know, from six to nine and then 10 to 12. You know, so if we, if we add six to nine points, we would be blended as a district. If we were nine to 12 or 10 to 12, we would be remote learning, based on that data. So then, you know, taking the bottom half of the chart, we would break that down by building. So, you know, you've got the same criteria that was there. Here's our eight buildings. We don't have any data because we have no students in the building or staff in the buildings at that time. And I would apply the student enrollment. So you can see, although it's small, you can see the numbers applied for student enrollment. Cohort movement, preschool and elementaries, I made the decision that they're low. For middle school and high school, I made the judgment that they were high because they're moving, even though the, so at the high school right now for in-person learning, they are moving every class period, right? So that's high, that's high movement cohort, you know, integration. When you take a look at the middle school, you could argue for medium because five of their eight classes are all in the same learning community. There's a very structured way for them to move from class to class. But still, eight times a day, they are being, taking classes with different groups of students. So I, in my estimation, I counted that as, as high movement. Social distancing, the preschool right now is the only building where, and if you looked at the criteria, it said, you know, what's the predominant social distancing? Preschool will be able to be at that predominant six feet. Every other building will be at the five feet. It would be the predominant average. And then this is where I weighted the district designation of the, the three areas. So as you could see, hopefully my math was right on this one, four criteria, two points each, so eight. And so created a graphic again for that point total. So it could give us a building designation. So if you're zero to four points, that building has enough mitigating factors or a low prevalence, a low spread rate, that it could be in-person in-building. Five to six would be blended, seven to eight would be remote. So to put it into the context, if we were to start school next week and we use this metric, what this would say to us is that the preschool and the elementary schools would start in-person, all kids, five days a week. And the middle school and high school, after the phase-in period, would remain in a blended learning structure if we went with the, the metric that was there. So that's a, a scenario that just gives context to some of the discussion.
Gary, is this, is this data, especially the, the school specific data being looked at daily, weekly? Just, I guess, how would that, in this, in these scenarios, how would that be kind of judged and looked at?
I think, you know, I think that's a great question for discussion and determination in terms of, do we go with a look-back period that is being happened, that is occurring at the county or the state level? Do we create more frequent, a greater frequency? I don't have a, a recommendation at this point. I think I would rely on, I, I would rely on what, what look-back period they're currently using and does that apply to a smaller scale? And because it's a smaller scale, does the frequency need to be increased to see that? So based on, as Jenny shared, we would be able to track this on a daily basis. But, but one of the things that I think we have to put into practice is we don't want to move through these systems on a daily basis. So we would have to create a cadence, like the governor's doing every Thursday, of giving an update. So I think we'd have to create a system to say, you know, here's the frequency with, with which we think we are, we will look at the data and report the updated data. If the board wants to go to something like this, I think we have to have a transparent dashboard as to, here's what we're at and here's what we're seeing and here's the trend data. But we'd have to look at that and give that update. And then when we give that update, the next phase is to say, when are we going to make the switch? You know, if there is a switch shared, when are we going to make that switch? But I think we are all, and this is the part that I know is difficult, but we all have to give ourselves that opportunity that if we see something happening in our data, we need to act right away. You know, if, if we see all of a sudden, there's a huge spike, then we need to act and we need to go to remote 2.0 to try and slow the spread or blended, whatever it may be. But I think, Seth, to answer your question, we would have to, it would be my recommendation, we kind of follow a cadence that's been established by health professionals. And we commit to a time period in which we'd communicate those updates. And then we determine when we would make a switch in program delivery based on those determinations. But that's just all thoughts right now.
Right. And just piggybacking on that, from my perspective, my, my immediate opinion is, we would, we can collect the data as often as we want and collecting it is, is, collecting it more often is probably more helpful. But we also have to live our day-to-day lives. And so I would think that we would do a cadence of, you know, do it, you know, whether we do the report on Friday or whatever, we have the web, our website, so that the same way, I'm sure all of us will be watching those numbers daily. Those who are interested can watch it daily. But I also think the reality of it is, is, you know, if there's an emergency, nobody's going to stop us and nobody's going to expect us not to react to an emergency. But the way this pandemic has occurred, it's, it's a slow-moving wave. And so I think adjusting weekly, you know, coming out, Thursday's probably good so people can make plans on, over the weekend or what have you. Because these, you know, it's easy to say, we're just going to jump between levels, but that's going to have real consequences for our families. And so we need to be cautious on, on, you know, how we deliver that and, and make sure that our families can plan appropriately. Again, the goal is to be in-person and, and safe at the same time. And the only time we would change that delivery is when we can't be safe and in-person. So I, I generally like that, but I, I kind of use as an example, calling a snow day. When you call a snow day, all the children will think you're reasonable and insightful. And all the parents will wonder why the heck you, you know, called a snow day and there's no snow on the ground. This is more serious than a snow day. But at the same time, whatever system we choose, there's going to be that backbench second guessing. So I want us to take the time to make sure that it's not, that it lets us have informed judgment. And at the end of the day, just like calling a snow day, it's a judgment based on what's the safest thing to do. And that's where I want to make sure that our, our, whatever system we come up with allows us to communicate with parents what the temperature in the, in the district is. But ultimately, our parents expect us to do what's reasonable and safe. So I want to, I want to come up with a good framework, but I don't want to be, I don't want it to be that we are absolving ourselves of any judgment. At the end of the day, we have to make intelligent judgments. And if it seems like the pandemic is spreading, the reasonable response is remote learning to combat spread. If it seems like we can do some mitigating factors to go from, you know, using the analogy to go from red back to orange, we can try to do that for a short time. But I, you know, we've talked before, we really, I'm hoping level three is, is a lot of discussion, but we're going to be in that level two, level one or at the other end of it. I don't think we'll be in level three often or long. But that's just an instinct, we have to plan beyond that. Any other questions or comments?
One clarifying, in, in elementary, in scenarios that are being given, the likelihood of the elementary schools being in blended is, is very low. Correct. Because the recommendation is to be five days a week because they're, they're not moving around, their cohort's not moving around. Or if we get to a level where we don't feel like it's safe, they would not go to a blended situation, they would go to a remote 2.0.
Correct. So based on, based on the scenarios that's built and the metrics that are there and because all of those, you know, such a preponderance of factors are going to be low, the cases and the prevalence of cases and the spread of cases is going to be the determining factor. So it would be a good assumption to say that elementary and preschools will, if we, if we use a system like this, will either be remote or will be all-in. Not saying that we could not utilize blended, but it may not apply as much as it would at the secondary level.
So this system also leaves room for, let's say, Whitney to be remote and Sarar to still be in session?
Correct. If we like the example that's set up, because it could, it could take a look at that specific. It, it, if as a district, the metrics come out that, you know, it's, it's an option for the, the buildings to be open, then yes, that, that exact example can be there, you know? For some reason, we're seeing a spike in Whitney, but the other. You know, we're, for some reason, we're seeing a spike in Whitney, but the other elementaries were not, so they can continue to be open.
So we, we, the work has to be done in terms of, like, I'm looking at COVID prevalence in Strongsville. Like, what do we determine at a low level, a low, like, how much spread there is in order us to say, okay, that's a low level? Or, you know, that's a medium or high level? Is that the work that needs to be done?
Yeah, so the work that, I, I think the work that needs to be done is, let me just kind of frame it in a couple of decision points. A couple of decision points are, or, or direction is, if we like the concept of giving the district flexibility for what level three red means, then we move forward and continue to discuss and finalize the, the metrics that I've started a draft of. And so Sherri, one of the things that I think the, the board and all of us would be charged with is to get into the weeds of that data and say, you know, even though the county's presenting it as four different colors, that I put verbiage to, to say low, medium, medium, high and high, do we agree with that? Do, do we agree with that categorization of it that aligns with what the county does? Or do we want to change that at all? You know, so the, the next steps in my mind would be, i- if the board wants to move forward with this concept, is to first take a look at the indicators. Do we agree with the indicators? Do we think they're going to give us some semblance of evidence to help support a, a decision? Are there ones that we don't like and we should get rid of? Are there ones that we're missing that we should add? What are we trying to measure? You know, a lot of what's being measured at the, you know, is exposure, prevalence, spread. Are we doing that? And then, you know, I think the, the, the heavy lifts are going to be, you know, what are, what are the metrics we want to use to designate low, medium and high for prevalence and spread in our schools? And, and like the county, is that going to evolve? Is that going to change as cases go? Or is that going to be a static number of 10%, you know, 5%, 10%, 15%, whatever it may be? And then the same goes for the buildings. And then I think, you know, I would also, I think we all need to consider, going to Seth's question, do we feel that enrollment, cohort movement and social distancing are mitigating factors? Right now, they're presented as such, right? If we can do this, this will mitigate some of the other risks that are there. And it's going to keep certain buildings that have more mitigation or ability to mitigate in, in-person learning more frequently than our larger buildings. The scenario's set up to do that. So I would encourage the board to reflect on that and think, do you agree with that? Do you agree with the metrics that's being used for the mitigating factors? Do you agree with the mitigating factors are there? Are there other things that are present? And so, you, you know, I, I think, you know, we have, next week, we're back again. So we have, you know, seven, eight days to reflect on this and come back and have a meaningful discussion as to where we want to go, if that's the will of the board.
I have actually a couple of questions. One, based on the data we have and based on the scenario, if the students were in school this week, families should expect, if I'm reading, understanding this correctly, elementary school to be in-person five days and middle and high school in blended as, as suggested as of right now?
Correct.
Based on the data we have?
Based on the data we have, if we, if we ran it through this met- metric.
For our middle school and high school that travel to other school districts for sports, academic, what have you, I'd like to see that added just from a standpoint of knowing what those school districts are, are going through. I think that's going to be important, you know, as those different games or events come up. And do we have any, and I, I haven't had a chance to look, is there any data for the, the school districts that are in, in the different states? I know that are already in school that have any, that are in-person? Let me clarify. For states that have students in school that are actually in the classroom, is there any data that's out there from a standpoint of what they're doing and, and working or not working? I think it's Georgia, I believe that has students that are there. And kind of what the, the parameters they have in place versus cases and everything else? I don't know if we know that or?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I know, you know, Jenny's been collecting articles and evidence from, you know, other countries that started before us as, as kind of information points. I haven't seen anything come out about specific school districts, but we can take a look at that as well.
Just from a standpoint of, I mean, I think having a formula is important. But obviously, one big factor right now is we don't know the student side of it all. We don't know, you know, having kids in, in class and what that, that factor is. So if there's a way to get, get some generic data that can, maybe kind of plug in and kind of see how that looks, I think would be helpful to make the, make the correct decision.
Yeah, we can research that.
Go ahead.
As we're considering this kind of metric, and we've talked a little bit, you, you used the term informed judgment a few minutes ago about how we have to make informed judgment. I think it's really important that the parents can make an informed judgment. So for me, like, I'm all for exploring this, but I think we either need to make a decision about how school will be started or delay the survey. Because I think it's really hard for a parent to have informed judgment if they don't know, they have no idea whether they're going to go five days or remote right from the get-go. And I know for some families, they might be okay with hybrid and remote, but they're not okay with five-day. And I think it's really hard to ask them to decide on a solo program versus the other three options. And I think that's a huge decision without all of the data. Now, I recognize that it's changing all the time.
Sure.
And that these, but I think we have to at least give them a starting point of, you know, for example, we have a potential one here. Like, at what point can we say, yes, this is what we're looking at for three weeks from now? To me, that's more important tonight to say, either we're going to delay the survey or we're going to make a decision than necessarily what it is that we decide to do.
If you can provide a little more context for me in terms of your comments.
Sure.
So if, if I'm a parent, so he- here's the opposite perspective.
Mm-hmm.
If you're a parent and you're choosing the in-person model, you need to be prepared that you're going to live in all three of these at different times during the year. I understand the, the comment that, you know, we've had other school districts in the area that have announced, you know, we're going to go remote learning for nine weeks. And I can understand a parent saying, hey, if the district's going to start for the first quarter and be remote, that I'd rather do that than be in the solo program. So I, I completely understand that. But if you can talk a little bit about, so I can build my understanding of, if I'm a parent, why I should not be preparing to live in all three of those options if I decide not to be in the solo program?
I think parents are preparing to be in all three options. I just think that because red is debatable and it's the hot topic, we have to give some, like, guidance. If we're going to deviate from the county and the risk level, which is essentially what we're doing, then we have to give them something to, to latch on to, some kind of data point to say, this is why we're deviating from the straight, you know, color-coded model. And that's why I think we get stuck, because I think they know, like, okay, yellow, orange, we know, we are expecting that, we know what purple's expecting, but we are deviating from the expected response to red. And that's why I think it matters.
And so just as, as the board offers additional feedback in, in terms of the survey, I think you have to marry with that decision that if we are going to delay the su- survey, we are going to delay the start of the solo program. And so that, that is something that, i- if you take a look at the domino effects of enrollment, excuse me, selection of teachers, training of teachers, getting all kids enrolled in all of their classes, whether they're in lane one, two or three, whichever is selected, the recension period that we need. So if, I, I would just put that out there for the board to consider that if there's any discussion that we're going to delay the finalization of the survey, there's probably going to be an equal delay of when those students would start their online experience.
I think the one potential solution to that in solving all the problems is just to have the parents sign up for solo and then pull back if we make a decision somewhere in the interim. And that covers the parents' bases. Does that make sense?
And that's what we've been sharing with our parents. We've said, sign up and then, you know, if it doesn't work out, then you can rescind.
Just to share my thought process, we, you know, from a parent perspective, we have a menu. And there's really two options. Option one is solo. And I would suggest that any parent who has serious concerns about health and health risks, they need to seriously consider being in a position to use the solo option. The other option is our best effort to have in-person education. Recognizing every, just because everybody wants every, you know, all our students in school five days a week, it's a pandemic and I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not Dr. Fauci, I'm not any doctor of any kind. And so, again, I think it's reasonable. The reason I, I think we're discussing what to do about red is that disagreement over, is if red in Cuyahoga County, me, what does that mean? Because, again, remote, blended, all of those have educational consequences. We've all struggled as parents and as, as people in the school district, you know, balancing, let's just shut down until this pandemic is over versus losing those opportunities for all of our students, for all of our children to be in school. And trying to balance those two is what we're, what, what we're discussing and what we're trying to come to a comfort level to. It would be really easy to just say, yellow and orange, you're in-person. Red and purple, you're at home. But, again, I look at red and I've already talked about my belief that school is essential. And if we can do it safely, that's what we need to do. And I don't want to be in a position where we're saying everybody's remote when we don't necessarily have to be. My comment on the, on the system is, is I would want us to look back at it again. And I understand what you were saying, Cameron. It's not what we like, it's what we believe supports our decision-making. So if, if a factor doesn't really help us make a decision, I think simpler is better. And I'd like to reduce some of it because it's, it's a little convoluted. And I think we can simplify it to simply support that, that framework. And I look at it not as a exercise in math or whatever. I look at it as explaining to the public and explaining to the parents how we are balancing safety with get, having kids in school. At the end of the day, all of this discussion, if our, if our staff doesn't believe they're safe, they're not coming back to school. If our parents don't believe the students are safe, they're not coming back to school. So I think this is a good start, but it, it needs to be a little simpler and it needs to address, we can, either, either we believe we can do this safely and not because we just think so, but because we have all of these factors in place. And therefore, we're making the decision to say our children are going to come into school and they're going to learn that way. Or we believe that the facts, the facts on the ground mean we need to stay remote. I think blended is a tool that we would use very rarely. I think blended becomes very difficult for all the practical pragmatic reasons. So I'm in full support that at the elementary level, we should be ready to tell parents it's one or the other. You know, I don't want to take away total judgment, you know, because again, the, you know, everything changes all the time. But I think it's reasonable and I think there's, you know, I would want to make sure there's consensus. But I think it's pretty reasonable at the elementary level, we're in one or two options. At the, at the middle school and the high school level, there's just those extra things that we have to consider. There, you know, I, I describe it as opportunity to get sick. It's harder to control those, those variables at the middle school and the high school level. And so we do want to have some factors that allow us to have judgment on it. In my mind, the only time we would go to blended is if we think, if we would go to blended for a very short period of time, a week or two weeks, it would allow us to get back to safely in-person learning. But I, you know, if you just kind of look at it logically, if, if we say infection is rising, spread, infection is spreading, more and more people are getting sick, we're quickly going to be at remote two-point-O. At which point, we will marshal all our efforts to do remote well. But from a parent perspective, they really, I think they really need to say, if they have concerns about their health that rise above willing to live with the virus, because that's what we, we have to do, figure out how to live with this virus on a day-to-day basis, they should seriously consider the solo option. I recognize there's downsides to that solo option. We will work through them. It is not a, you know, this is it and we'll talk to you in, in a semester. We will work through those issues, we will address those issues as best we can. And sometimes we won't be able to make a happy, a happy result. But we'll recognize that and hopefully it'll be a period of time and we can get back to in-person. If parents are generally comfortable with the way the pandemic's working, many of us are getting up and going downtown and going to work or working from home or whatever, but we're still shopping and we're still choosing when to go to restaurants and things like that. But we're putting on masks and we're washing our hands and, and we're doing all of those things. And I think they should strongly consider the totality of what we're presenting and sign up for in-person. But I don't, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. We're just trying to balance, we constantly are trying to balance things that can't be necessarily balanced. And all things considered, I hope we've given enough information to parents that they can make an informed decision. If they have, if parents still have questions, we have the people who will have the conversation with them. They're committed to having the conversation with them. Our special ed parents have very particular questions. Andy is ready, Andy and his team are ready to have those conversations to make an informed decision. All the other parents, if you have specific questions, we'll work through them. But we also have, I mean, it's, we have to recognize, it's going to be August on, on Saturday. And I know Steve has a ton of work to get ready. I know Aaron has a ton of work to get ready. And I think having it, you know, like you said, if you have concerns, sign up for solo and we'll work through them. But decisions need to be made. Is there general, are there any other comments or questions? I don't want to be the only one talking. Robin tells me I do that enough. Do you have, what's next?
So I just wanted to open up to the board for any questions. Obviously, Aaron's here, if you'd like some updates on solo. If you, as you mentioned, Andy's got his plan ready to start sharing tomorrow with his workgroups and some of the questions there, so he's online and available. Questions about tech or communications or staffing? So I just wanted to open up to the board, instead of directing what I think you may want to hear. What are the things that you want to hear or talk about or add some feedback? And we've got our directors here that can share their expertise too.
I had a question regards to face masks for the teachers. Knowing that that was already going to be something that was going to have to be in place, are we providing them with clear face masks as far as over the mouth or shields so that they can communicate more effectively and have that, I guess, lessen that barrier between the students and the, and the teachers?
So what we are purchasing is we are purchasing two cloth face coverings for every employee in the district. We have disposable face coverings as needed. Some of our staff, world language staff, you know, some of our staff that have students or staff members that have hearing impairments that need to see staff members' mouths, they can have a choice, we can get them. They, they, early on, requested the, the cloth face coverings with the, with the clear cutout. So that's an option. But we've also purchased about, we've purchased a number of face shields for our staff as well. So if you take a look at, if I'm a primary teacher and I'm teaching a lesson on phonics, kids need to see my mouth and they need to, to, to understand the words that I'm saying, not muffled behind a mask a little bit. So we will have those, again, there's criteria, right? There's criteria as to why a face shield would be utilized instead of a facial covering. Those will be available. I've also had a conversation, we have, of all of our workgroups, we have captains of each of those workgroups, so we meet frequently. And so one of the last conversations we had last week was, here's what we're purchasing for all of our staff, which is face masks, face shields as needed, disinfection bottle, paper towels for the room, hand sanitizer for the common areas in each of the classrooms. If there's any other PPE equipment that you need, if- If there's any other PPE equipment that you need, if you're a guidance counselor and you think you need a clear shield between you and a student or a speech pathologist or whatever your role may be, let Steve know, so Steve's gathering that information. The principals, excuse me, the principals are filtering it to make sure that it's agreeable to them as well. But, you know, those, that's the process we're using. We're starting with, here's what everybody's going to get. And then if there's other things that you need that we can either provide in-house or purchase outside, we'll do that.
Students who may need the face shields as opposed to the masks, like the kids are learning how to read and the teachers also need to see that they're pronouncing correctly. Or our world language learners who are trying to learn a different language and the teacher needs to hear them more precisely. Are we addressing that at all?
So we have not, we have not made a decision or discussed thoroughly what we're providing for students other than disposable masks as needed on the bus or in-person. So that's a conversation we'll need to have, we haven't had it yet. I guess Laura and for the rest of the board members, you know, that's something that maybe think about as we come back because as you take a look at nearly 6,000 students, the cost can become very high very quickly. So that's something, you know, Steve's got the prices already on masks versus facial covering, so we can share that with the board. But I think we've got to be thoughtful in that decision, you know, paper masks are not a significant cost. But when you start talking about face shields and that quantity, it could be.
Someone had mentioned portable Plexiglas that can be moved from room to room so that when a teacher is doing a phonics lesson or a world language teacher is, that can be moved from room to room, that would sit in front of a student's desk.
And so that's what we shared with the principals, that you need to let us know what you need. So one of the things is, you know, you know, a lot of elementary classrooms have a kidney-shaped table and that's where they would do reading groups. And, and you've seen pictures of, there's a circular shield with the dividers that go out. So we want to purchase things that teachers are going to utilize, we don't want to make global purchases. You know, because one of the things that we've had to do is, is we're purchasing a significant amount of furniture. Because if you take a look at some of our primary classrooms, there are tables like this and four kids to a table. That means we have to purchase four desks if we do not have access. So, you know, we, Steve's got a furniture order for, throughout the district where we need additional desks. And that's something in terms of the Plexiglas dividers, we want that to come from the teacher. Because some teachers may just say, I don't know if I'm comfortable in that close a proximity, so I'm going to find a different way to do the reading groups or, or facilitate reading instruction. Versus some that are, we can, we can purchase those if, if necessary.
I know we purchased Chromebooks and I guess might be from Dave or Steve kind of combined. But from standpoint of talking about how they're going to be assigned and just that, not only handing them out, but also if, you know, thankfully we'll be in person all the time. If that's the case, will the Chromebook stay with that child or that student the entire time, kind of how that process will look?
At the high school, they're assigned their freshman year, they're given a Chromebook and they keep that same Chromebook for all four years during the summer. This past year, I've been working on changing the policy at the middle school. Starting this year, a sixth grader will get a new Chromebook. And then they will carry that Chromebook with them through sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. However, over the summer, they were going to turn the device in and then the device will be maintenance and cared for. And then after the eighth grade year, they'll go to the high school, they'll get their last device, their ninth grade year and carry through. So six through 12, they'll have their own device, they don't have to worry about it, they'll have their carrying case and their charger. Last year was the first year we were one-to-one in the elementary schools. Teachers were to assign devices to students, basically the same, like you're number one, two, three based on that. And that's what we're going to continue to do this year. We were able to purchase some additional Chromebooks for kindergarten as well, so they'll be one-to-one. So it'll be working with the teachers and the elementary techs to make sure that there are spreadsheets available, or spreadsheets made that they can share and assign the students to those Chromebooks. However, we are still waiting for some of those Chromebooks to come in. We, we purchased, we started the purchase order back in February. With the supply chains the way they are, we're still waiting on our Chromebooks for this year to, to arrive.
Thank you.
And Dave, just to clarify, our high school students pay for their Chromebooks, correct? When they're issued that as a ninth grader, there's a fee tacked onto their fees for the four years that they're in the high school and they pay for it and own it then when they're done?
That is correct, there's additional $25 fee starting their freshman year.
It's 50.
It's 50?
Well, it's 25 for the device, it's 25 for support. Well, no, the insurance is optional.
Okay.
So it, it's a $50 total technology fee, but actually 25 goes towards the device.
Yeah, so 25 is for the Chromebook itself and there's a $25 separate tech fee, which is for some of the proprietary software programs, things like that. But then after four, those four years, they have paid $100 worth towards the device, they get to keep it when they graduate. And it's released to them, they're no longer in our management council.
Dave, while we have you, what other things are you doing from the technology department to prepare us to be ready?
For in-person, something that we addressed for the high school was there's some issues in classrooms where they were not, where they were having problems getting all the Chromebooks to come on at one time to the network. This summer, we were able to update all the access points in the high school to high-density access points. So we will not have any connectivity issues anymore with the classrooms. When it comes to connecting them, when they come in for social distancing, we are creating, using rolling whiteboards and projectors on carts, areas and buildings for elementary schools that if for some reason they have to go to a wider social distancing than they have to or we have to move to another location, that's not a traditional classroom. We have a system already set up for that teacher to be in place. Those items should be in hopefully before the start of school year as well.
And then Dave, you, you want to talk about, you know, I, I know it's a software application, but what was purchased by the district to make the end-user experience? And all the apps and icons and websites, talk a little bit about that. I think that's going to be a nice feature for our kids and our families.
One of the big, big concerns that we had from the parent survey and the teacher survey about remote learning was access to the software. Not only having a unified LMS like Google Classroom or Unified Classroom, but was getting to the software itself. So early in the summer, the tech department's purchased a program called ClassLink. What it does is when a student logs into a Chromebook, it basically opens up a screen, a home screen, kind of like a tablet where it has icons and then the text of that program underneath it. So when any student opens up their device, the programs that are associated with their learning or what we feel is important for their grade band will be available to them in one location. So when they open up for like elementary schools, there'll be an icon for like Lexia, Raz Kids, Go Math. There'll be a button there for their Google Drive, the individual Google Drive programs. So they can open up, log in, and then the programs that they will need to have access to would be easily available to them. They wouldn't have to search through different websites, it's right there up front for them. And I think it's going to be a nice tool. Teresa Williamson, our data coordinator, has been working really hard with ClassLink and those other programs along with Brenda, as well with curriculum. We're going to get all these programs integrated as quickly as possible. Because there's, all those programs tend to have different integration or login pathways. So we're having to pull in from like Google and, and Windows and all these other different ways to get these kids into the programs. So it's taking some time, but we should have the major programs that every student needs by the start of the school year ready and available in ClassLink.
And can you talk about the, you know, remote 2.0 kind of live piece of that and how that will integrate with the Chromebooks and then the teachers will be able to utilize and the different software that we're using for that?
For what?
Remote 2.0.
For, for, so if they were at home, they could log into ClassLink, get to that. And the program that we purchased was PairDeck this summer. PairDeck allows students, teachers to create like a Google slide presentation and they can insert formative assessment into that presentation. Those presentations can be synchronous or asynchronous. But then the teacher still has all the access while they're, when the students finish those slides, they get all that access there on their teacher dashboard all at one time. Towards any live instruction, is that what you were going for? I, I couldn't hear you quite well.
Yeah, as far as the live instruction to, if we have to go to fully remote 2.0, what kind of scenario?
That I've been working with Aaron on, I guess that's more of the solo option three, correct?
No, he's, he's talking about the, in the, in the pathway of in-person, in-person to blended to, to remote. So, you know, Dave's role is helping to support, you know, Google Classroom along with Aaron and Jenny in terms of the training for our staff to have that similar pathway of how all things are going to be assigned, collected, given feedback on if we're, we're completely remote. You know, Jenny and Aaron are working on professional development. So Jenny, since you're at the microphone, you want to talk a little bit about the professional development that's going on in that area to prepare?
Yeah, so on, I think it was Monday, I believe, I had four of our high school teachers come in and they are working on a plan, and this is something that we're going to roll out to teachers next week, they're coming in next week and the week after, to create a, a system that is similar between any, any subject that you teach, and when I'm talking six to 12 right now. And I think the elementary will do something, something similar. But basically creating kind of a, a learning path. So maybe in like a two-week increment, they would have a learning path, so all students would know, you know, here's, here's the, here's the subject or here's the content standard that I need to learn. And then from there, you know, maybe I'm a student that I already kind of know part of it. So I don't need to watch this video, I can do my exit ticket, I can do the formative assessment that Dave's talking about. And so, and then I can move on to the next piece. So whether you're, we're in a blended environment, whether we go in class or whether we're remote, every student can follow this plan and be on this plan and then ask questions to the teachers, have access to the teachers to clarify, maybe they need extra help. But basically, they'll know exactly where they need to go and they have the tools that they need. And so what Dave's referring to is things like PairDeck, EdPuzzle, Screencastify and some of those tools that our teachers need to understand to use along with Google Classroom. They're going to be informed either next week in, in these trainings, but really more detailed on those programs. Some already know them, but the week of the 17th when we have our teachers here, those that need a little bit more assistance or training in those programs will have it. And so that's the idea so that, you know, whether, whatever format we're in, students have the tools, they understand what they can do and they can kind of move at their own pace and their own speed. And the teacher can be kind of there to facilitate and check in and make sure that they're on track, so.
Thank you.
And then just the, we have the hardware, the webcams, the, those kinds of things if we do need to go remote 2.0?
We purchased additional webcams and document cameras. We purchased additional microphones to go with those systems at the middle school and high school. And we purchased new programs, or new microphones for the elementary schools. They were not wired because they haven't done any renovations considering the technology in those buildings. So we are purchasing building sets of microphones so teachers can go with blended or remote or even create lessons for those students who are, who are removed from the classroom for either a solo program or for a quarantine. They can get their sound clearly into their videos along with the interaction of the boards through either their touchscreen Chromebooks. Or we can actually record the interactions from the EBSI projectors themselves.
Great. It's, you know, I don't want anyone to be seduced, it's not as simple as just doing a Zoom, right? And with children, we can't, you know, we, we all know some of the funny and not-so-funny things that happen when you just set up a Zoom or what have you that we did before. But we do need to have that kind of technology ready for interactive and for dialogue between teachers and students and things like that. So I'm glad to hear we're, we're thinking about the hardware and we're thinking about the software to make that happen.
And I, and I think just, you know, to also piggyback on Seth's question, you know, if you look at the spring, our predominant mode of providing remote learning was asynchronous with some live, synchronous live instruction. I, I've received all of the draft plans for remote learning and that will be shared publicly next Tuesday of what those will be. But just to share, it's a flipped model in terms of the predominant feature of remote 2.0 will be live or synchronous learning with support as needed with asynchronous to take that into consideration. So I know that's always a big question, is my child going to follow their, follow their schedule? Are they going to have live interactions with teachers? So take what you experienced in spring and flip it around and that's going to be the experience. If we need to enact remote learning 2.0 and more specificity, I just need to not say that word anymore. For each, for each level will be shared next week.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you, Dave. Any other topics that you'd like to discuss or get some feedback or have questions on?
I think we need to give Aaron an opportunity.
Oh, she, she was trying to hide over there, I could tell. Aaron, why don't you come on up to the podium and we could talk a little bit about solo?
And, and again, some of it is just, you know, I, I look at this work session, board meeting, kind of like our work group meetings. It's an opportunity for parents to, to get some good information from all the department heads. So I appreciate Aaron willingly being put on the spot.
Sure.
What are your challenges? What are you thinking about? And, you know, we, we can do this and we can do this well, what help do you need?
Can't see my face, correct, under this? So we're in a really good place with the solo enrollments. The challenge is going to be the timeframe that Dr. Reiba alluded to. We're looking to get staff recommendations and final enrollment by early next week, which then allows us basically a week to email every single person that signed up and said either yes or maybe I'd like this version of solo and confirm with them that that's what they want. And then do the same with the no's and confirm that they don't want it, get all of those back. And from there, then determine scheduling. So based upon the solo model we use, it's going to look very different. If we're doing Model 3, it's going to be, as Dr. Reiba again alluded to, we need staff training. A lot, if we're going to do, you know, in-person for our K8 students with Model 3. If we're doing two, version two solo, that's also involves professional development from the ESC so that we are all grading the same way, we're assessing, we're doing communications with parents. Expectations of our teachers and what that looks like, how often they're communicating, Google Hangouts, those type of things. And then the scheduling of the kids is kind of the biggest challenge right now. We're looking to create a very similar environment from what they had registered for in the fall to what we can put them on in solo. As we're finding, a lot of the upper-level classes are not offered. So we're in conversations as to what can we do to rectify that? Can we, you know, start looking at certain classes that are offered at the high school? Can we allow students to come in and take those? Because we don't want to punish students who have worked their entire careers and now can't take a B.C. Calc. We also offer some CCP courses at the high school. We would rather keep them in-house, to be honest, and have our teachers teaching the CCP if possible in our building rather than giving our money to the colleges and not having the ownership of our students. So those are some of the, the situations we're facing as long, or as well as the co-curriculars discussions. And, and we're getting close to having these decisions. But that all factors into that timeline of, we would like an answer by Friday. Where do you stand with solo one, two and three? So it's just going to be a tight time crunch. There's also materials that are involved, so if we go with solo option one or two, we need to order the materials. They come from the Educational Service Center, we have to get those distributed to students. We have all of the Chromebooks from Dave's department that he has to collect from the buildings, register them, get them ready to go, get them to the students, get the students and parents a training and ideally have that all ready to go August 24th. So that's where we are with solo.
I would, I would like to just share, because I think one of the challenges is, it's the same challenge we have at the high school, whether it's an elective or what have you. Our goal is, is to do the best effort we can. But just like at the high school, there's some electives where if only four students sign up for the class, we just can't in good conscience have that class. We can't practically have that class. And so for parents to understand, it's not that we're saying you got to do this or that. Some of it is, is we need to see what parents are going to sign up for so we can see where the dominos fall and make intelligent decisions. But our goal, again, is to do what we can reasonably do, our, our best effort. If, you know, if magically we have 20 kids that want, you know, If, you know, if magically we have 20 kids that want, you know, calculus A B, that's different than if we have three kids who want that. But until we get those, that data and can start seeing and ruling out, you know, the easy answers are going to be easy. They're going to take care of themselves. There's, you know, there's only one person that needs this, so how do we accommodate it? And if we can't, we have that conversation. Or the other end, there's enough that we can get a Strongsville teacher and put them or put her or him in that class. But we got to work through that. But it is that idea of we're trying to do the best we can.
Absolutely, right.
Balancing a lot of things that don't want to be balanced. So I do appreciate everything you're doing for the students in the district.
Any other questions about that program or?
A question I've heard a couple times.
Sure.
For the kids, and it's more from elementary parents, I think, that, that they're unsure, you know, what the kids are going back to. So they are leaning towards signing up for solo. Their question is if they come back in January, where will their kids be as compared to the kids who have been in school that first semester?
Right. And, and that's a great question. It is one that comes up often. We talk about grade level curriculum for Ohio. So the solo curriculum for the young kids is Lincoln Learning and that's Ohio-specific curriculum at grade level in the subject area. So although the pacing may not be exactly the same day to day, you know, we may not be on fractions, you know, in, in the building and on the platform on the same day, they are going to learn the same content. So they run by semesters. If we can look at the entirety of the semester for the Lincoln Learning, see the content standards that they're going to be learning, they are aligned to the general progression that's going on in the classroom. So as I've been saying, you know, there might be a little bit of adjustment because the materials are different and I'm talking if we go solo one or two. However, skill set wise, I'm not concerned about that. We've had many kids use this program in years past and some of them have gone back into the building because that's one of the, the benefits of using the program. It just takes it, you know, that little bit of time to, to get used to the Go Math or get caught up in the novel, the book or the class might be reading, those type of things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we able to share kind of where signups are currently? I don't know if anybody who has those numbers, but?
Yeah, I can, Aaron, I don't know if you know.
I've been watching it during the meeting. They've gone significantly up. I don't know what that means. Uh huh. I can tell you we're at like 954 total responses to the survey. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody is a yes to all models. You know, some are saying, yes, I only want it if it's version three, our staff, our teachers. So we have a nice breakdown that Dave and Dr. Riba did as far as by building, by grade level, who are the yeses, who are the maybes for each of the different options. That's where it gets a little bit tricky because until we know exactly which one we're going with, we can't definitively say, oh, that's, that's a section of the building or that's a teacher we can use. So that's kind of, that kind of comes into play as well. Dr. Riba has a more specific breakdown or Jenny has one there as well as far as, you know, if you want specifics.
Somewhere, it sounds like we have somewhere between 15 and 20% of our parents that are interested in, in some kind of solo.
Yeah, and if you take a look at the breakdown just globally, you know, we asked the question, if it's option one, two, or three, are you a yes, no, or maybe? So I'll just go with the yeses. 399 yeses for option one, 570 yeses for option two, and 589 yeses for option three so far. Keeping into consideration, option three is not available to high school students. So that's representative of why there, the number's not a significant increase. So as Aaron said, when you take a look at now 967 people that have completed the survey.
I must have sold it really well up here, huh?
That's right, you did. You know, the, the communication and I, and I just want to reiterate the, the point that she, she made is right now we're tracking these yeses. And if these yeses commit, we know that we're going to need fewer teachers in some elementary buildings because of the yeses. And then we can use those teachers to facilitate option three. But we can't make that final decision until all of these pieces get put into place. So, you know, that's something that I know, you know, Aaron's working on on a daily basis, Jenny's working on on a daily basis. I have all the confidence in the world, we're going to be ready, but we're going to need every hour of every day from now until the 24th to get, to make it happen. And so just, I'll just, the, the last thing that I'll say unless there's any other questions is part of Aaron's communication is not only the confirmation, but the specificity of you are enroll, if you say yes, you are enrolling in option two. You are enrolling in option three. And I know, I know Sawyer left, but I think I wanted to, I wanted to kind of mention, our, our students are not going to get a teacher, may not get a teacher that they know from their school. They will get a teacher that's, if, if they're in lane three, they will get a Strongsville City Schools teacher that's licensed to teach in that area that may be from a different school because as you said, Rich, if, if we have 20-some kids, we're going to put them with one teacher and that teacher can be a teacher from anywhere in the district.
Any other questions for Aaron? Thank you very much.
Sure.
You want me to get Andy online? You want to talk to Andy next?
Andy's up. Let's make sure he's awake.
All right, there he is. All right, Andy, it's your turn. Oh, he's new. There you are, Andy. So I'm going to turn it over to the board who may want to get some updates in the work that you're overseeing.
Okay. Do you want to provide that or is there a specific question right now?
I, you know, Andy, if you can just give us an overview, I think, you know, obviously your, your department with special ed, a lot of those parents have very specific concerns and everybody can understand them whether they apply or not. So again, what are your challenges? What are your preparations? What do you want parents to know at this point to help them make intelligent, informed decisions for their, for their children?
Right. So obviously this is a very interesting time for everybody, but especially our kid with, our parents with kids with disabilities right now. And, you know, we're working very closely with them. They've been very involved. Our, our community is fabulous. We had a work group meeting a couple of weeks ago and there were about 70 parents. And then we, we have another one tomorrow that we're looking forward to. We heard the feedback loud and clear. The feedback really was a, a theme of being concerned about what is the plan for my child if we were to go remote or hybrid and they're at home? Because quite honestly, special education, specially designed instruction does not translate very well to a computer or being virtual. The challenge is that you don't amend an IEP, rewrite an IEP for a circumstance. And what I mean by that is IEPs are driven by the needs of a child and their disability, not by remote 2.0, blended learning, school closures, COVID. And so we have a plan, we have an option that we're excited to provide to people tomorrow to, to get some feedback on that we think satisfies that feedback in terms of what is the plan. So we're really looking at devising plans for all of our students with disabilities more proactively than we were able to last spring, quite honestly, to say, this is how we're going to address all the needs of your child if we were in any type of remote setting. So we're looking forward to getting some feedback from parents on that tomorrow. We've also spent some time really going through each scenario of school this year and putting some words to, in a visual and a chart to really describe what it's going to look like for kids with these, so that we can have a conversation about that as well. So there's more clarity and there's more communication going into this year as opposed to last spring when we were all thrown into it. Any questions about that so far?
I like what we're hearing and again, we want to foster that idea that we're going to work as a team. You know, the IEP always talks about it's a, a team decision, the student, the parent and the teacher. And we're going to continue that framework and continue that method. Again, trying to make the best decisions we can, recognizing that, you know, some of them are really opposed to each other. You know, some of our special needs kids, you know, saying remote 2.0, it's easy to say, it's, it's very difficult if not impossible to do. But we'll work through those with all of our parents and their students, again, with the best maximum effort. Unless there's any specific questions, you're off the hook until your meeting tomorrow. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And so going in that same idea as to August 4th, as Andy shared, he's got work groups tomorrow, get feedback from there. And then on August 4th, we'll be able to share publicly with everybody what the plan would be and as he stated, with clarity of here's how services and supports will be delivered in any version where kids are not with us five days a week. And that, that's inclusive of the solo program. Any other questions from the board in terms of our, our restart plan or, or feedback that you'd like to provide at this time?
Do you have, have you covered everything you wanted to cover and get input from the board on?
Everything that was on my list has been covered, yes.
Great. Any other specific questions, whether it's for the superintendent or anyone else? So next on our agenda is Board of Education Other. Does anybody have any Board of Education Other? So to kind of summarize today's work session, and I'm communicating particularly to the parents, it's important that you have as much information as you can to make informed decisions. There should be no question about our mask policy. We will have a comprehensive, effective, reasonable facial covering policy that is just one piece of our entire plan for mitigating infection in COVID-19. It will have the, you know, the face coverings, the face shields. Steve will work with our principals and our teachers to have portable Plexiglas shields when those are effective. We'll do, we're doing the extra hand washing, we're doing the disinfecting, we're doing the distance as much as we can. But if parents are concerned or had a question about what our attitude is, they should know that we take this seriously and until medical professionals in general tell us we don't need to do certain things, we will continue to do those things whenever we're in-person, blended, and even if we're remote 2.0, the adults will still be coming into the buildings to work, will still be doing a vast majority of those things. We won't let our guard down. Hopefully we've given some ideas and, and a direction of where we are with the state color coding system. If we are yellow or orange, we will, our intention is to be in school five days a week for everyone. If we are in purple, our intention is to be remote 2.0. And if we are in red, we will come up with a way that we can communicate clearly that we are going to use our best judgment to balance being safe and in-person versus blended or remote. A little about, a little of that needs to be worked on and we recognize that. But the intention again is always to balance, education is essential and if we can do it safely in-person, that's our primary objective. But when we can't, we won't. So hopefully that gives enough information for parents to make informed decisions. And like I said before, if there are specific questions, we are happy to answer them. We're happy to work through those, you know, is it best for my child with these circumstances to be solo or, or these are my concerns when my child is in school or remote? Those kinds of things I, we're welcome to discuss. I will caution you, we have all debated all sides of it. This is the decisions that we're making as a board right now. We are always welcoming public input and public comment, but to suggest that we are going to switch these decisions, we have consensus as a board and we need to move forward and, and, and make those decisions. So I will share that, you know, these are the decisions we're making. The last caveat I will have is that we are doing as a team, as a board and as an administrative team, the best we can do for our charge, which is Strongsville. However, we're all aware that Ohio and the United States of America and the world at large might have different decisions to be made. While we were talking about our plan, Cuyahoga County is talking about their recommendation being remote. While we're talking about our plan, Columbus is dealing with remote. So we're going to do our best to defend and advocate for what's best for Strongsville, but I will be, I will be honest with everyone that, you know, sometimes the decisions are taken out of our hand, just like with the stay-at-home orders. Regardless of what we felt, we had to follow those rules. So I will share that as a caveat. I wanted to give anybody else a chance if they have a message that they want to deliver.
I just want to say thank you, all the people that are on the different committees that are helping make these decisions and to all the directors, obviously you guys are working very tirelessly and, and especially late night tonight. So thank you for, for that and all you guys' help. But looking forward to get, getting to a point where we can get, you know, students either back in the building or, or learning again with, with our staff. I know they're very excited to, to be with them. So just a thank you in general to, to everybody for all their hard work.
Well said, and I concur. Hearing no other comments, we do have reason for a short executive session on the topic of?
To consider the evaluation and employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Salee. Any discussion? Would you take the roll?
Mr. Roberts?
Oh, I apologize.
I'm a little slow. Can we add discipline to it?
We can.
Is that possible? Thank you.
To consider the discipline of a public employee or official.
I just have a specific question, that's all.
No, no, that's fine.
We can add it.
Mr. Roberts? Yes. Mrs. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
We will enter into executive session at 9:30. We have no expectation of business afterwards. Again, I thank everybody for their attention and for their efforts to do the best we can for our students and their education. Have a good evening.